Recording in progress.
And ask attendees to keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. Thank you for participating in your city government.
Get it from somewhere. All right. Can we maybe look at fixing the audio because that's going to drive me crazy.
The theme of the day is patience, patience.
Stop, stop, stop.
They're working on it.
Test. It's still echoing.
That's, that's, it's better, but it's still there.
So it's like the volume is too high. And everyone in here does.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I know. Test. Yeah. Test, test, testing, testing. It does sound better, though. Testing one, two, three. Okay, so we are back. Apologize. We had a little bit of technical difficulties, but there's still a little bit of an echo in the chamber. And I will pass it to Dr. Barber to kick us off.
All right. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Barber. All right, and we will now move to our study session item number one, receive update on 2024 City Staff Work Program, and we'll pass it to Nat.
Presenting. Thank you very much, and I apologize for the echo in here in chambers. I hope you're all doing well. I'm going to go ahead and share the screen, so bear with me one moment. Hopefully this part of technology works. And okay. Right. Good afternoon, everyone. It is a privilege to present the strategic priorities and the city staff work program. This is a look back at all of the accomplishments in 2023, as well as a look forward at many, but not all of citywide initiatives that are in store for us in 2024. So although we call these the City Staff Work Program, they are truly aspects of the city council and the community schools and priorities. And all of you provide the policy direction for what are the city's priorities through the vision, the mission, the council adopted value drivers and strategic priorities. And through the leadership of our city manager, our staff executes those priorities into each of the work program items. So the city council's vision is Monterey, a beautiful place to live, work, and visit on the and I know we're troubleshooting some of this echo, but as we, as we go here, so I'll keep, I'll keep going. Our city council's mission statement is, in partnership with our entire community, the Monterey City Council provides visionary leadership, ensuring a safe, healthy, and economically vibrant and sustainable environment. You know, I wonder if this is coming from the, the give me a moment. No, yeah, not only the sky, but let me mute this. It does play sound. AV mute. Oh, that's, that's AV mute. Okay. Sir, audio mute.
Let me, let me figure.
Okay. Our city manager will, will troubleshoot the technology in the chambers while I continue the presentation, so I apologize for this. Okay. We'll keep, we'll keep going. So how do we use this process? We use this process by keeping the city council focused on their priorities. It also helps staff focus on what's most important to the council and to the community. It gives us an opportunity to provide counsel twice a year with updates on what we're doing and how each of our initiatives are progressing throughout the year. It also amplifies the need to balance what's important and urgent, what's less important, as well as what's less urgent. And it also shows the community the wide variety of city initiatives that we have. This is also important to recognize the resource allocation, because each of these initiatives requires legal review, analysis, and recommendations. And many, as you'll see, many of the staff work program items don't include ongoing efforts or some of the routine service delivery that we have. We are a small, full-service city government serving 30,000 residents. Council, community, and staff continue to balance expectations with the fiscal and staffing realities. I'm still trying to identify here what, what this audio is. I'll keep, you'd like me to keep going?
Okay.
Okay.
Stop, maybe a little further away.
Maybe further away from my cap. There's a volume button on that mic. Okay, it was the projector that was on for some reason. Usually that's muted. So it must have been, been the echo. So very good. Thank you. Kudos to our city manager extraordinaire. Mic drop. Yeah. Okay. We, as you all know, we're a full-service city here, so everyone plays a role, including, including our city manager. So our value drivers are vast. We'll go through each of the value drivers this afternoon. And the first one is focused on quality of life, and this is to, this value driver focuses on diversity, equity, and inclusion, championing equitable access to affordable housing, as well as maintaining a safe environment and the broader topic of quality of life. And, and so this strategic priority is health and wellness. We provide meals to individuals and families throughout the holiday season. This past November and December, over 13,800 families were served. This is an incredible partnership with the Food Bank for Monterey County, as well as the Monterey Fire and Police Departments that help with the home deliveries. And we also partnered this year with the cities of Seaside Marina Fire Departments for those home deliveries as well. Also through the Food Bank, our staff and volunteers offer produce pickup each week for seniors at Schultz Park Center. The city council also supported $80,000 in funding this fiscal year to support the Mules on Wheels program through the CDBG efforts, the Community Development Block grant. We're also coordinating with the American Red Cross. This is, we're such a strong partner. We're actually known as the premier blood partner for the Red Cross and offered 13 blood drives this year, I think over 365 pints of blood at Hilltop Park Center. On the public safety side, after some hurdles with the vendor that you are all aware of, we are very excited to report that the new police department records management system goes live next month. And that is helping the city improve efficiency and help meet new state reporting and record-keeping mandates. The new airport agreements, the, the new agreement with the Monterey Peninsula Airport District went into effect this past October. It allows us to continue our partnership with the airport, supporting both the aircraft rescue and firefighting needs, as well as medical calls and firefighting response off the tarmac. That includes the airport terminal, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods around, around the airport. And aside from the thousands of calls that our police department responds to, there are 29 days of events the police department staffs to ensure public safety. These events range from the Cali Roots Festival to the Monterey County Fair, the Monterey Bay Half Marathon, and Car Week. Last but not least, council approved the purchase of an aerial fire truck for 1.7 million dollars in October 2022 and is expected to arrive in 2025. In September 2023, council appropriated funds for the purchase of a new USAR truck and trailer unit. Emergencies and community resiliency. The Community Emergency Response Team in 2023 had 78 new members, putting in 5,168 hours and 24 activations. These are our boots on the ground that support our communities and neighborhoods during emergencies. We received grant funds in this priority year also on the general plan, safety element, infrastructure grants, tunnels, and Elistera Lake pumps and generators, as well as the Mark Thomas Bike Lane projects, or just some of the projects we're applying for and seeking more funds into the future. The city also continues to focus on fuel reduction efforts. This helps us reduce and remove invasive species. There was $348,000 in work this fiscal year, and we're very proud to announce that we received CAL FIRE funds of $800,000 this past year towards fuel reduction. Last but not least, we have the Community Wildfire and Prevention Plan, which was adopted this past year. Having a healthy community also means providing opportunities for physical and mental well-being. And our team does that through the Monterey Sports Center, which has been rated for 10 years in a row best health club by Monterey County Weekly Readers. And we continue to reinvent the new programs, and this past year expanded hours at the end of July. We're now open weekdays until 9:00 PM, and then weekdays, or weekends, rather, until 5:00 PM. Our team has developed and launched summer camp programs that include a variety of sports, soccer, beach basketball, or beach volleyball, basketball, other programs. Camp Keen Sabe celebrated 70 years this summer over at Toro Park. And all the camps combined, including the Whispering Pines Day Camp, as well as Camp Keen Sabe, brought over 2,400 campers. Work continues on the Old Capital Site Master Plan. The city has recently started to employ the services of BFS Landscape Architects just down the street. They'll be working on public engagement with our team this spring to gather feedback from the community on what they like to see the future of the Old Capital Site look like. And the plan will be completed later this year. Very excited about this effort. And recreation programs continue to provide opportunities for all. We have the STEAM events. These are the science, technology, education, arts, and math events coordinated by both recreation and library departments. They're, they're collaborating with programs at the Keston of Oak Knoll Community Center, as well as offering different programs such as bridge, bingo ceramics, and other activities for seniors. The total count is 350 recreation programs with over 31,000 participants in one year alone. As we look to the library, where we just received delivery of our new bookmobile, and it looks amazing. It's currently parked in the lot next door, and the goal is to bring it into service this March. The bookmobile reaches many of our neighborhoods throughout Monterey. And it's, it's, it's truly amazing. Received a large grant from the state to help supplement the cost of that, of that bookmobile. The children's area, we received $53,710 from the Monterey County Gives Campaign, as well as the Friends and Foundation for the Monterey Public Library. There have been partnerships with Ohana, as well as First Five California. We received an early learning hub grant from the state of California to renovate the children's area as well, and that is a $188,000 grant. And then ongoing programs at the library to help support mental health, physical health, social justice, include community story time, coloring for relaxation, windsock making, anime your way, bilingual programs, and button making for Pride Month. Those are just some of the programs that have been offered at the library. And in 2024, our team hopes to launch a new book vending kiosk or book lockers, which will help allow increased access to library materials in our neighborhoods for those who may not be able to visit the library during regular operating hours. We also work to address neighborhood concerns. Laguna Grande Regional Park continues to be a priority in our work in collaboration with the JPA. Tree mapping and inventory, as well as addressing issues that come up. For example, last year, there were concerns about mobile phone reliability from Verizon as a result of over-usage. as a result of over-usage at at the fairgrounds on the Verizon network. So we've been working with their team. Funding N C I P projects. In twenty twenty-three, staff completed fifteen N C I P projects. And in twenty twenty-three, council funded forty-four N C I P projects and four cutoff projects, covering a wide variety of efforts from streets and sidewalks to forest management and historic preservation. Let's go to the protecting our environment value driver. And one of the priorities is to protect the National Marine Sanctuary. Staff's currently working on preparing the local coastal plan to be released for review in twenty twenty-four. There's ongoing work on the stormwater and water quality protection regulatory permit. We're continuing to manage the nine hundred and fifty nine five one Del Monte Avenue groundwater remediation project. This is a legacy dry cleaning solvent contamination site. Our efforts on Worf Two and sustainable fishing continue. We partner with the Monterey Bay Fisheries Trust to promote sustainable fishing, as well as local fishing. The photo you see here on the screen, this is just taken a couple of weeks ago by one of our harbor staff members, A J Young. It is a photo of residents waiting in line, a very long line, to purchase Dungeness crab from local fishermen. We also do do work to remove derelict and abandoned vessels. Last year, there was a barge from the aquarium that was retrieved. We're also reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The greenhouse gas inventory updates continue. Last year, we hosted a fellow from Singapore who spent several weeks with our city staff through a program with the U S State Department. We continue to support S B thirteen eighty-three compliance. The photo here shows just a couple of weeks ago a grant that our regional program led by Regent Monterey gave to V T C, also known as the Veterans Transition Center. And our staff is also updating the Climate Action Plan with new targets in twenty twenty-four, new climate reduction targets. We are also continuing to expand our electric vehicle infrastructure. There is a three C E grant called Plan Your Fleet, and our staff have been designing what expanded charging stations look like for our city's fleet. And that design is almost completed through a consultant, completely funded through a three C E grant. We also have public electric vehicle charging. There was a AMBA grant, Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments grant, that unfortunately we worked on in collaboration with the regional government, was not awarded, but we hope to find additional revenues and additional funds that help support public E V charging, not only in our parking lots and parking garages, but also in multifamily housing areas where there's very limited access to E V charging. But we are very excited and looking forward later this year for the Tesla Destination Charging, that's not only for Tesla vehicles, but for other electric vehicles, twenty-five ports in the harbor lot. We are also investing in six new vehicles this year for electric vehicles, including our first electric truck, a Ford F one fifty Lightning. And then other efforts include citywide GPS telematics that help us better understand how our vehicles are being driven, so that they're more fuel efficient and perhaps changing some of the behavior of our of our drivers. The other value driver that's important to the city is our fiscal stewardship, and that includes economic vitality efforts, streamlining operations, revenue enhancements, long-term planning, fiscal transparency and also community partnerships. We have a solid repayment plan to ensure that interfund debt is repaid. We've also, this past year, hired a business license inspector to implement updated processes, as well as ensure compliance. The purchasing card policy is being updated, as well as we're reviewing various areas of expenditure, including the partnership that we have with the California State Parks to provide lifeguard services at beaches in Monterey. We are one of the few cities that has this unique partnership with state parks. Appropriate revenue enhancements. We're planning this year very modest fee increases in parks and recreation that's aligned with inflation. We also have T O T audits, these hotel tax audits, this past year collecting over six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in unpaid taxes. On the establishing city reserves, congratulations to the city council and for your leadership in funding reserves that are needed to support our our city. Twenty percent of general fund operating expenses is our goal for the Fund for Economic Uncertainty, and we're we're there. When it comes to the Conference Center Reserve, council adopted a policy to fund that reserve, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. The Sports Center facilities reserve at half a million dollars per year. The pension reserve at one million to two point five million dollars a year. The Sea Level Rise contingency, this is the Thailand's, at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Public Safety Facility at a quarter million a year, as well as the library for the same amount. Business retention and attraction efforts continue through our collaboration with all the business associations and groups throughout the community. That includes the Old Monterey Business Association, Lighthouse Avenue, Canary Row and North Fremont, as well as Fisherman's Wharf Association. Supporting our military installations continues to be a priority for us. It's one of our largest economic drivers. The Intergovernmental Support Agreement renewals were completed in March of twenty twenty-three. The Monterey Bay Military Communities Compatible Use Study was completed in June twenty twenty-three. We were the lead agency, as you all know, on that regional effort that spanned not only Monterey County, but also parts of San Luis Obispo County, where Camp Roberts is located. And then we continue to engage with what we call the Team Monterey Partners, and these are all of the military installations throughout our region. The Defense Communities Infrastructure Program continues to be a grant funding source through the Department of Defense that we're looking at pursuing. We've been meeting with our partners at the Navy, the Army and the city of Seaside and other partners to look at what project can we fund? In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow morning on this topic. And then two other items, we're advocating and supporting A B forty-six, which is addressing taxation on military pay, which is unique here in California, as well as A B four forty-four, which is state funding to help support a more statewide D C program for defense communities. When we look at grants, we provided all of you with a report, so we won't go into detail on each of these grants, but we are proud to state that the total grants that the city has received since July twenty twenty-two total over five point six million dollars. Some of the pending grants include U S D A Community Forestry. We focus on our housing grants. We've received funding, LEAP funds and REAP funds, these regional funds for housing element work, as well as the P L H A funding for the Mid Penn pre-development work. Facility rehabilitation, repair and replacement. The photo here is of the newly repaved and and resurfaced, rather, gymnasium at the Monterey Sports Center. Lots of work there, the dehumidifier, waterslide repairs, locker room floors, gym floors. Our Parks and Rec Director Karen Larson shared with me recently that last year, we spent nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars on infrastructure and projects at the Sports Center alone, with one point one million dollars in work currently in progress. In addition to facility rehab, the city is currently working on the sewer master plan and sewer rate study. We're continuing to address pension liability. And the city has done that through funding initially two million dollars towards the Section one fifteen trust through the Public Agency Retirement Service, known as P A R S. The council policy is to fund the pension unfunded pension liability to the tune of anywhere between one million dollars to two and a half million dollars per year. That is going to help go towards the most recent report, and this is actually not in your packet, but is a new number from our finance department. The unfunded accrued liability, the U A L, that the city currently has is a hundred, one hundred and eighty point two five million dollars. And that is as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. Quite significant. We're working towards addressing it. On the technologies and business solutions, so many efforts. There's the launch of the Smart Rec software early last year, service request portal and app, which is coming to all of you this year, where residents can make their requests, take photos, G P S-based service requests, digital parking permits, implementation of a new financial software E R P system, network infrastructure investments of one point five million dollars going online in the next couple of weeks, body-on-camera cameras and in-car cameras, as well as cybersecurity awareness. But that's not all. We have a few more stayed here, web-based dock license renewal, emergency satellite communications in the E O C, in case the internet goes down, as we experienced last year with Verizon during the winter storms. We 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 know from our own experience, just thirty minutes ago, city council technology here in the council chambers needs to be updated. And that is a project that will be launched and will be kicking off next month. Updated VoIP communications, this is voice over I P. So this will help not only reduce our costs for the the phone lines and the phone infrastructure, but allow many of our workers to be able to take phone calls if they're working remote, if they're out in the field, taking phone calls using their cellphone, but connected to the city's phone system. That'll help reduce costs. Our plan is also to replace many of our copiers and printers. And then this year, we also implemented a new rental inventory solution with a firm based out of Massachusetts. Another value driver is for us to help develop and retain our quality city workforce. And that's providing employees with the tools and the resources they need to be successful, and that also includes employee performance and coaching and a feedback system. We're updating our our new system. All employees are now on an annual evaluation system that is consistent and being implemented citywide. There's also D E I training for all city employees. Updates in our hiring and recruiting efforts, development of a D E I framework as well, was completed recently. We have employee safety and wellness. We continue to have employee safety committee meetings on a regular basis, safety training, and then also the required A B eighteen twenty-five harassment prevention training offered to all employees. And then, of course, having fair and competitive and market-driven labor negotiations for all of the city's bargaining units. There's a total compensation study that's currently being conducted with a consultant, working with the Human Resources Department, that will be completed this year. Another value driver for the council is to secure water sources, championing regional and local efforts to secure affordable, sustainable water sources for the city, not only today, but also into the future. And that includes projects such as the runoff to sewer project that you may have heard about recently in the news. Tricia Wotan on our team's been working on that. That's the Elastero Lake and Olivier diversion projects. We're also have cross-checked the water district regarding additional water for Rena units and exploring potential collaboration with the Marina Coast Water District as well. Another value driver for a council has been a priority. One could argue a top priority for the last couple of years, last several years, is on affordable housing. And the city-owned potential affordable housing sites continue with our existing and current exclusive negotiating agreement with Mid Penn for the housing project behind City Hall on Van Buren Street. The Rental Registry Town Hall was conducted in May and council adopted the ordinance in November of twenty twenty-three. Addressing homelessness. Coordinating with homeless advocacy organizations. We've, we have a C D B G public service grant process. And this past year, the Monterey Police Department opened an outreach and navigation center for a homeless navigator person and a team, the M dot team, to be based at the old former French consulate location on Camino Elastero. The photo here is members of our team, our police department team and and housing team, meeting with Governor Gavin Newsom's homelessness czar. And that was a productive meeting with Hafsa Keke from the governor's office to talk about homelessness solutions and funding. Active mobility. This is a value driver that focuses on active transportation, accessibility and safety, maintaining our and repairing our core street roadway and storm drain infrastructure. There's the Franklin Corridor is planned to be added as part of the Adaptive Traffic Signal System by the end of this year. There's a two two hundred thousand dollar grant for the local road safety plan with fifty thousand dollars from Measure X. That's being planned for twenty twenty-five. And work continues on road rehab, storm drain infrastructure, all funded through S B one measures P and S, as well as Measure X regional funding. Technology and parking modernization tools continue to expand with digital permits with license plate reading technology, waterfront parking expansion. Phase two was completed, and the city continues to fund the trolley. Regional trail networks, the four tag efforts continue, the city's support of that, as well as the North Fremont Gap project. And then we also have mobility for people of all ages and abilities. We'll be bringing to you the A D A Transition Plan update later this year. Last year, we installed the A D A accessible beach mats and continue with the audible pedestrian signal installations and safety education programs such as Safe Routes to School. Historic preservation and diversity. One of the priorities is to interpret our history from a social justice lens, and the work continues through the museums program that that we have. Last year, we had the Buffalo Soldiers exhibit over at the Presidio Museum, a very successful program and exhibit, and then also expanding the Path of History Plan. The idea is to bring this forth to all of you in twenty twenty-four, as we look at history from a from a lens of all of the the people who've been part of the history of Monterey. Protecting Monterey's maritime history. Very excited to have the Western Flyer arrive in Monterey for one week in twenty twenty-three. That's the photo that you you see here. City staff continues to work to retrofit California dock for the Western Flyer. All right, on to, we're wrapping up here, the value driver of transparent and inclusive government. So we continue to focus not only on the in-person engagement, but digital, as well as the media relations piece. There were several town halls and public engagement efforts through the A D A Transition Plan on the Community Wildfire Prevention Plan this past year, twenty thirty-one general plan update. Other work on on this effort includes revising the conflict of interest code. We plan to also have a very transparent candidate nomination period for elections this year. We won't read all the statistics, but this is just a glimpse of some of the public workshops and meetings that were held. Twenty-six public workshops and meetings on six different topics, four hundred and forty attendees between January and August of last year. Postcards is a way that we are utilizing a method to gather and make sure we reach every household, because we we aren't forgetting that that not everyone is on Instagram or or Facebook or Twitter. So we've sent out over sixty thousand postcards on four topics, planning to send out more this year. That allows us to reach renters as well. Two hundred and fifty-six email campaigns, three surveys. We have a very strong reach of over thirty-three thousand Facebook followers, sixty-three thousand Instagram followers and thirteen thousand followers on X. And we're exploring the use of threads as well. We did launch our new website and expanded features in twenty twenty-three and continue to find ways to modernize it with new images, new video on the launch page. We're also updating the vision, mission and value drivers, and as we're spending time with you today, reviewing the city staff's work program twice a year. And we continue those partnerships with partner organizations we talked about earlier. So with that, we're proud to present, we have our department heads here and our city manager, city attorney, to answer any questions or feedback our city council has on the city staff's work program.
Thank you, Nat. Appreciate the presentation. It's clear that the there's a lot going on in the city of Monterey, and so just appreciate everything that staff is doing to make things run every single day that you know, we all take for granted, because they just happen seamlessly. So thank you all for that. With that, we'll take it to the council for questions, and then we'll bring it back for for closeout comments after we do public comments. So who wants to start us off? Questions first, please? I don't have any questions.
No questions? Councilor Hafens?
So, um. You know, with respect to working with Marina Coast Water District, as far as seeing if we can work out a mutually agreeable, you know, deal where they might supply us some water. I just wonder if there's any kind of more detailed update, like where are we at with that? How? What else can council do? Is there anything we can do to try to assist in that?
Yeah, thank you. We we are very closely coordinating right now to to ensure that what we are doing is in line with our general plan housing update. As council is aware, we we also added about sixteen hundred housing units into the former Ford Orton area. And we just met yesterday, had a conversation with with a team over there as well to ensure that what we are lining up is 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 all in. is all in in accordance with the existing intentions, regulations and and the law as well. So this is still ongoing. And I I think we will be bringing something forward to you in the next four to six weeks because yesterday we really made some progress on that.
Thank you very much. And with respect to the wildfire prevention plan, I think, what is that called? The CWPP? I'm just wondering if we could have any more information on on that as far as, is that primarily focused on removing flammable dead and material? Have we, are we going to consider anything in terms of making it easier for private owners to kind of get rid of some of the dead wood and 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 that kind of thing? Or I guess just wondering if somebody on staff can speak to that?
I don't want to put the fire chief on the spot here right now. This is what is in front of you and what was passed last last year was a community wide effort that included the communities of Pacific Grove, Monterey and Pebble Beach. And included ways of mitigating and forest management in there with respect to fuel, green belt fuel removal. I think what what we have, what we owe you still is maybe a presentation of that because I know that we were, that we had concluded that project last year and and Fire Chief Panholzer at that time was lauded by a lot of groups for for completing this this project on time. And so I I take this as as a good opportunity to to just share with you that yes, I think we owe you there a complex update that that provides you with the necessary information. I know that the concerned neighbors that were pushing for that are, I believe, I can say, very satisfied with the outcome.
Thanks a lot. I have other comments and suggestions, but I'll hold those for later. That's appropriate.
Councilor Barber?
Yes, thank you. So on Insep, I think that's great. We had the 44 projects that were completed, but understanding there's 73 active Insep that projects that we have total budget of 12.7 million. What does that look like in moving that through and 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 what's the process or timeline on that?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. So to answer your question, I'm Andrea Rani, Public Works Director. And so we completed 15 NCIP projects. And I believe we have 44 were approved last year. So we have about 12 point. I don't know the exact numbers. We have 12.3 million dollars in in projects right now. We have the equivalent to one full-time person working on these. We're also going to bring to council a request to award civil engineering consultant contracts so that we can try and further the number of projects that we're able to get to. Reggie, now who's the staff member working on this, he's been making great progress. But it it is, there are too many projects for one person right now.
That's why I was asking to find out a little bit more about what we're doing with moving those through and what that looks like. So I appreciate you giving me some more information. So I I take a bit more to come on that down the line.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I was hoping that somebody could speak more to the social justice programs in the library and what that looks like. I know there was some stuff talked about in the presentation and that might be things that have been achieved, but what the outlook looks like for that moving forward and how the public might be able to be engaged in in that process.
We'll have our library director, Brian Edwards, highlight some of the programs and what's planned for the year.
Sure, yeah. Thank you, Mayor Williamson. So I would say one of the things that we're working on is just bringing in diverse voices on there and next month, looking at we have Anthony Powell coming in to talk about Buffalo Soldiers again, and his grandfather was one of the Buffalo Soldiers out there. But we had the Expanded Path of History. We brought in a number of community sessions to talk about what areas to look at and we're expanding out on the Pearl District, which is our Japanese community out there, as well as the New Monterey District, which is all of the different populations that are out there. And we did work on a draft social justice plan for, with our consultant for museums to come across. How do we choose performers? How do we bring in different voices within that? We haven't restored our programs to the to the museums that we had pre-pandemic. So when we start bringing back more programs on there, it's about bringing in more voices on there. So I think it's looking also about what we celebrate and the kind of books we have, the presentations that we have in there, the book displays at the library and everything in there. So we need more voices, people to speak out and come to our Board of Library Trustees meetings, our Museums and Cultural Arts Commission meetings to have those voices directly to those commissions as well about what people want to see and also talking directly to us in the library about being more active in their library, about what people want to see from us and their own representation.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions on that?
Okay, I just have two more questions. Hans, if you can clarify for me, I think we joined 3CE as membership. I know we didn't, we didn't join initially, but we've since joined. Or no, we haven't.
No, we joined right away.
Well, we signed on to it, but as a as a municipality.
No, no, no. Yeah, yeah. So, yes, so we 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 founded 3CE. We are a founding member of 3CE. And with that, all our residents had the opportunity to switch to to 3CE. The city of Monterey at that time was in a contractual relationship with another alternative renewable energy provider, one of the few in the state of California at that time. So because you couldn't switch individually, this was a very small contingent of cities that was allowed to switch their accounts to a renewable energy. But we have since then, I believe about two years ago, became a full-fledged 3CE customer and we are actually purchasing our energy at the, and I don't want to say anything correct if I said it wrong. I will send you an email on Friday and then correct myself, but I think we are paying the a little bit extra to be 100% renewable.
Perfect. Thank you. That, thank you. Because and the reason I I kind of vaguely remember that. Okay, okay. And when the, when Nat was doing the presentation on the application to those, I knew that that was a barrier to us before because we weren't members. But now that we we've we've joined, it allows us to do that. So I just wanted to get that for my own clarification. And then the last thing is there was a bullet point on the business license inspector position. And where are we with that? Was that position filled? And
Yeah, the the business license inspector position has been filled and he is flashing his badge up and down the city corridors and the streets and is out there. I believe we filled the position early November.
Okay. And do we have a sense of how that's going, having that person there? Because that, right, I think part of the idea of that position was that it would basically pay for itself by us getting the business license fees that weren't being collected.
So I'll ask Gruffela, she's with us over Zoom to to give us a few more details.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Hi. Yes, our business license inspector, he has been adamant. He's gone out to the businesses and meeting with some of the districts to kind of introduce himself and let them know what's going on and how we're basically collaboratively working with the districts and also all the other businesses to make sure that everyone is in compliance. We are tracking as we go along the increases that are coming up with the with the revenues that we're getting from canvassing the areas. So we are, we expect to have by the end of fiscal year, something that actually shows how much have we, the increase has gone from direct efforts of this position.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Yeah, it would be great to see something in the budget process about what that looks like. So thank you for that that tidbit. All right, that is it for me. With that, we will take it out for public comment. Are there any, is there anybody in the chamber that wishes to make comments on this item? We have one on the chamber. Do we have anybody online? I'm going to go ahead and do a countdown for you to use the raise hand function in Zoom. We're going to capture everybody at once. So this is your one chance to raise your hand. I'm going to do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. All right, we have one person online. So we'll start in the chamber, Mr. Rowley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and staff and a lot of the city staff that I recognize. Tom Rowley, President of Fisherman's Flats Homeowners and Residents Association. Wanted to follow up. I put a copy of the original email I sent Tuesday, August 15. It was next on the agenda, September 27. It's next on the agenda, October 11, and it's today. And I'm really glad and happy to see that you're getting to this item. This is my fourth time here. This is very frustrating because events are overtaking what I came to warn you about, about the need to update the Highway 68 area plan. The county now has gotten into the act, is proposing over 1,400 units of housing at Tarpe Flats. It's been submitted to the state. I don't know if they got their response back like we did on our housing element. But we missed an opportunity to be ahead of the game. I talked informally to Hans and quite frankly, I think he dropped the ball. I talked to him informally on this back in March when we could have moved as a city to start a work program to up to date the Highway 68 area plan. Right now, it says Monterey is prevented from annexing any properties on the Highway 68 corridor till transportation improves on Highway 68. You all know that there was a major study. Deadline was January 8. We all input comments on the proposed roundabouts from Highway 1 all the way to the Salinas River. Whether Caltrans will, and with connection with TMC will pour through with this. And I've tried to, I've talked to the Public Works Director, the the director from Caltrans, didn't even know the name of our Public Works Director, which was very shocking to me because this is something that's been going on since the 1980s. I was here, there were no traffic signals on Monterey Salinas Highway when I moved back here in 1981. Not a, zero. You've been here lately. Tim Barber's only been here lately. You guys are newcomers. You do not have the history on what's been involved. We paid for NCIP funds, NIP funds, to put part of the signal at Jocelyn Canyon and Highway 68. The city has been involved for a long time in these improvements, working with Caltrans. Caltrans has so many new people, they have no historical background. That's what I found out. It did, not only did they not know who our current Public Works Director was, it's very frustrating as a member of the public to ask questions of government officials that don't know what's going on. So our annual meeting is on April, Monday, April 8. I'd like to invite you all to attend to it. It's when we have our elections, Monday, April 8. And our executive council, which we just met recently, is very disappointing that you have not moved forward with the proposal for the work item to get the Highway 68 area plan updated.
Thank you. Feel free to message us too, and we'll be sure to have that information available to us. Thank you. Let's take it online, please.
Yes, I'm calling on Esther.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks Clementine for show, seeing me on here because I couldn't get my raised hand to turn blue. I just had a question about ADA compliance. I don't think that any work has been done on that in my neighborhood. And I don't feel like NCIP should have to do that. So I guess we could talk about this more offline, but it just, it caught my attention because there was so much ADA going on. And I wanted to also thank Chief Hober and Lieutenant Castor for the town hall that they did the other night on the flock cameras. I think it was overwhelmingly positive as well as comments that I'm seeing on social media. So I'm looking forward to that going through. I know there's another town hall scheduled in February for that. But otherwise, well done, you guys. I mean, that's an impressive list of accomplishments and things that you have planned. And I really, it's really nice to see this council functioning and getting so much accomplished. So kudos to you all. Thanks.
Okay, thank you all for your public comments. We'll bring it back to the council for closing remarks. Who wants to start us off? Dr. Barbara, we'll start with you. Go ahead.
So I echo a lot of what Esther just said about how great it is. I applaud the the city staff. Excellent work. Everywhere I go, I'm hearing different things about the projects that we're doing here in the city of Monterey, and that's because of the hard work that you do every day. So I want to applaud you for what you're doing. And this shows it. As they say, the proof is in the pudding, and here it is. Are we perfect? No. But are we striving? Yes. And so I think that's important in this day and time. I think that we continue to move forward with all the changes that happen in this world today to be able to keep up with it so that we know what to do to have all those drivers to be met. Because it's a moving target constantly because of a changing world. So I applaud you for your work and ask you to continue to do good work and know that we're here to support you as best we can. Thank you.
Hey, Councilor Bravo?
Yeah, I'm just really proud to be part of this city and thank you to all the staff who have been accomplishing all of that work on the work plan. It's a lot. And 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 it's really good stuff. I mean, it's really good things that our city staff are doing. Just to highlight a few things. First of all, it's all good. There were a few things that for me really stand out as important. The outreach our city staff are doing, you know, we can't do a good job as a council or or as staff if we don't communicate with our residents. And so, you know, all of those postcards, emails, the Have Your Say Monterey, the forums, you know, what we're doing now with the with the license plate readers, what we did with the rental registry, cannabis and and other issues. I just think that's really commendable and, you know, hope we continue to do that. The progress on reserve funds is really, really, I think, critical because all of those issues that those funds are, you know, addressing are going to be big ticket items and we just have to be planning for the long haul. The EV charging stations that we're working on, we're implementing, that's great. We need a lot, we need more of them. I'll just say though, that for example, having those EV charging stations, let's say at the Wharf, I predict we're going to see folks who come down from the Bay Area, who maybe are going to head further down Big Sur and and the coast. And they're going to stop there. They're going to charge their vehicles. They're going to go and eat. They're going to go and buy things here in Monterey. I'm glad to hear we're making progress on the old Capitol site plan. It's, you know, again, it's a, it's a long thing, but in the end, it's going to be really a positive thing for our community when we finally, you know, get something, something going there. And also at Laguna Grande, you know, the trail maintenance and all of that as part of the Laguna Grande plan is really important. I'm glad we're making progress on all of those things. So there were just two things that I kind of wanted to put on the table and see what staff's thoughts were or and or council members. I mean, one of them is Mr. Rowley's idea, which is, you know, has to do with us revising or amending the Highway 68 area plan. So I guess to me, that seems like it makes a lot of sense. I don't know why we wouldn't want to try to annex that property at Tarpe Flats since it seems to be ripe for development. And if the county develops it, our police, our fire, our libraries, our roads are all going to be impacted by the people who are living there. But the county will be getting the lion's share of the tax revenue to pay for that. So it seems to me we either need to move forward with something like this or we need to try to work out some kind of an MOU with the county to make sure that some of those costs are shared. So we don't get stuck with the bill for all of it. So we don't get stuck with the bill for all of it. But I guess I'd like to hear from staff first. I know during the housing element plan, I understand that we were up against the timeline and I understand that this annexation is something that will take time. So that it couldn't be included in that. But I'm just wondering, is it more just a, is, is it more resources on the side part of staff? Or is there any other kind of reluctance, reasons for reluctance, why we shouldn't be moving forward with trying to address that?
And thank you for the question, Kimberly Cole, Community Development Director for the city. One of the programs in the housing element, and there's many programs, we have almost like 50 different implementation measures, once it's adopted, is to update the Highway 68 area plan. And that will also include updating the growth projections for the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District site. So it is an implementation program. Our goal was to first adopt the housing element, safety element, circulation element and land use element this spring. We're getting ready to release the environmental impact report. And that's been the sole focus basically of our planning office this past year. In regards to the annexation piece, the county general plan in its last update designated that for low income housing. And they are looking at potentially 100% low income housing on that site. If we annex that into the city of Monterey, that doesn't benefit us in terms of RENA. We actually have to assume that RENA into our city and it'll be on top of our 3,654 housing units. So in our mind, there wasn't necessarily a huge rush to go ahead and annex that property is that it's already being planned for, for many years at the county level for low income housing. We do need to work on services and the Highway 60, 68 update and as we move towards implementation in our minds.
Can I ask a follow up to that?
So is the idea in the work plan to move forward with the annexation, but just not, it's just not a priority right now, given our need to focus on getting the housing element complete?
So we're going to focus on the housing element first and then to update the Highway 68 area plan, which requires a vote of the people of Monterey. And then if that plan wants us to annex that property, then that would be implementation to annex it into the city.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. So it is, it is, I just to clarify that, it is on our plan. Eventually we will get to that.
It's, it's a program in our housing element.
Got it. Okay.
If that becomes the number one priority of the council for implementation of the housing element, then we would need to work on that.
And Kim, if, if we did end up annexing, it's, I just want to make sure I understand. We couldn't amend our housing element when that happened to try to sort of adopt in the housing units associated with that and maybe swap out some somewhere else or not?
We don't get to swap out. It would be a net increase.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Another issue, I just kind of wanted to put on the table and see either what staff or other council members had to think, had to say about it. Has to do with undergrounding and I, I know it's, it's come up before. And partly just because of other priorities and other demands, it hasn't maybe risen to the level of getting on our work plan. It's expensive, but I think there may be ways to do it in which maybe you go for a, a bond and then different neighborhoods and property owners would have some sort of a lien put on their property so that they're responsible for their property share of it. It might involve doing it on a neighborhood by neighborhood basis. Maybe not all neighborhoods will want to be involved in that. I don't know. But I know that there is interest in some neighborhoods. And I think that it fits into our strategic vision in the sense of aesthetics. Obviously, we're a beautiful place and having all of those poles isn't so beautiful. And I also think it fits in in terms of safety, which is another one of our priorities in the sense that it, it is a fight, they are fire hazards or they can create fires. And I think also in terms of kind of sustainability or resiliency. I mean, good God, how often do we have to deal with power outages in the city? So I mean, I do think there is value there if it can be done. And I, and I, and in the past, I haven't pushed for it because just there are other priorities, but I'm, my feeling is it might be time to revisit that as something to, to look at. And so I don't know how Hans feels about that or how the other council members feel.
So you're absolutely correct. When you speak about all the benefits of undergrounding and why we have to turn the corner now and take a look at that. And we will ring forward to you actually something on February 6th that will address undergrounding.
Wow. Now that's what I call responsiveness.
Just wait and see.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoffa. I will go to Councilmember Smith next.
Yeah. So many of the, the comments I had are already have been addressed in the last couple of go rounds here, but I'm just want to highlight a couple of things that are a priority as we move forward. And I'm not sure where they'll all fit in, but I think some of, some of it's important enough to, to highlight. So we have our forward property. And the city manager talked about the negotiations ongoing with water, with Marina Coast Water. So I don't expect an answer tonight, but I would love it if we were able to address this at the right time for the council. Once we know where we are with water and assessment to move ahead, but to not have to do another RFP. And I don't know if that's legal. I don't know if it's possible, but we've already had two rounds of RFPs. So Alan and I are aware of those because these happen to prior councils. So it's, it's property with not a clean path of, it's not easy. But I don't know where we go from here, but maybe we'll get more clear answer once we know where we are with the negotiations with water. So I'm interested in that as we look forward to this next year. I want to also highlight, I think it was in 2020 when we had our council team work, looking at each of the value drivers and value driver number five was actually added. And that's having to do with water. And I think we struggled with how we put that there. But now that it's there, it seems like it makes sense and it feels better with a lot more clarity because now we're looking at opportunity sites. We're looking at how we're negotiating with another water district. We're looking at how that connects to what this council sees as opportunities for developing additional housing sites. So good that that was accomplished and I'm glad that the council was able to see that value driver number five to, to have significance to be added. I concur with the comments about Highway 68. That one is a bit of a complicated sticky wicked because there was a vote many years ago that gave some directions. Overlay with that ongoing is the Transportation Authority of Monterey County is waiting for the results of the EIR outreach, which will then come back to the Tamsi Board. And then make some decisions as the designing goes into place for Highway 68, which is roundabouts in, in the transportation piece. That's a, a piece that also plays into how we approach the city of Monterey with the impact of Highway 68 that belongs to the county. So it's one of those cases of do we sit back and wait for the annex to happen once properties have been developed within the county jurisdiction? Because then there's a desire that they become part of the city and so the vote is, is easier. Or do we have a vote that we rush to go through before anything's built? So there's a lot of moving parts to that. But I'm interested to see where that comes out as our economic development and planning director talked about more to come on that. So looking forward to that. But it is a high priority for us to see how we steer our own front yard as Highway 68 is related to traffic and future development and a possibility in the future of some type of an annex. And I don't know how that looks right now, but there's a lot of moving parts to that. The other comment is I have on the role of planning and economic development for our city staff. So as I drive through the city in a variety of, if it's okay, District one and District three and, or District three and District four. I'm looking around and I see, as you all do, that there are some commercial properties that are sitting vacant. So one of the larger ones in District four is the closure of M and S lumber. So I'm wondering in terms of how we utilize our planning and if she, if we shouldn't have a little more help on the economic development piece associated to planning. And I don't know what that looks like, but I get a sense that we may not be able to be as vibrant, responsive and in tune with the moving pieces of commercial property, economic development, opportunities, small companies that want to come in, small companies that are looking. But I don't want to see a continuation of where we have properties that sent dormant, they sit dormant and we're not even sure sometimes of who the owner is, but we can find out. And when we do, we find out the owner's out of town. They may not be motivated. So I just think that there might be an opportunity to do more on the economic development piece on land use because we're not in charge of private property ownership when they decide to just close or decide not to rent. I just think we need to be involved in that a little bit more. And if there was an opportunity to do that, that may look like an expanded role and personnel assistance that comes to planning. But I'd be interested to see how that could come out as we move forward in the next year. Because I don't want to see us wind up having too many properties that sit vacant for no apparent reason, and no one really knows what's going on with the property. Where we might be able to be playing in that role of a conduit to see something that might happen. I think that's all my comments that are to the heart of this report. I'll just say, you know, annually, when we go through this, it's, it's always very satisfying to see because it really is a, a great report card. As you mentioned, it's basically a look back and it's a reflection that we're saying, yeah, we think we're on the right track with our value drivers and here's the results. And then we'll also have another value driver team building process where we'll, we'll tweak that a little bit, but a good job to city staff. This is not the city council that's doing this work. I know one of the things that's in here is, I think it's the last one. The value driver number nine that actually is probably one of the most difficult and in time consuming that many people may not even realize. Number nine is foster of local government that is transparent and collaborative and solicits, welcomes and appreciates input from all. And when you think about that on the back page, community partnerships, Montage, Middlebury, Monterey Peninsula College, naval, naval support activity, Army Garrison Presidio Monterey, Coast Guard Station, Monterey Bay Aquarium, Monterey Peninsula Unified School District, CSU MB and not mentioning them all. That's where a lot of the time goes with our city staff. That is emails and phone calls and meetings and correspondence. So thank you for the work that you do that keeps us connected, that makes Monterey a very special place. And you do the work of the council's ideas and we can sit up here twice a month and say on a vote of 5-0 or 3-2 or whatever it turns out, and the city manager makes it happen. But thank you very much for all the hard work that the city staff has done to make this an A plus report card.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Thank you, Nat and staff for the report. It's a, it's a very, very impressive and, and cool list to check out and, and really look at the details of the work that went in throughout the, the past year. And I, I think that yes, city staff does all the work. But I think there's also a point here to highlight that as council members, we get to advocate for a lot of these things that happen throughout the city. But even better, the advocacy really comes from the residents. So we speak to residents, residents tell us what they need, what the issues are. We funnel that to, to city staff and then we get these awesome reports. So thank you so much. I think it was a nice segue talking about economic development as Councilmember Smith had, had just mentioned. So I think I'll start there. I have a list of items that are front of mind for me. Most of them were included on the list. So I just stick to a few. But business, economic development, business revitalization is, is one of the items that's front of mind for me. Being a resident of District four and driving through North Fremont on a daily basis. I, I feel the impact of businesses closing and being shut down for a long time. And what that does to other businesses that are still struggling to maintain. So I think something that I would like to see and would advocate for more strongly in the coming year, and, and this is really a long-term item. Revitalizing our, our business districts and whatever that looks like for each of our business districts. In particular, North Fremont, I think there's a great potential there. There's a lot of work to be done. And I think a good place to start is really revisiting in more detail the North Fremont specific plan and see at least what kind of nuggets we can get. You know, get going sooner rather than later. To give that area a little bit of a jumpstart. And I think it's also important, going back to the, the broader idea of economic development. I think we have a community that are very sharp, very intelligent, very resourceful. And that could use a lot of help from us, from partners to encourage their entrepreneur spirit. So keeping those businesses with our residents or, or encourage our residents to really follow those dreams if they have that to start their own business. Yeah, I think it'd be great to really set up processes for them to be able to tap into resources. That helps, I think, the whole community in terms of economic development and then what that does for our, our neighborhoods. I know there was a, a slide with a lot of information about community outreach and engagement, and I really appreciate that. It's information that I'd like to see. I'd like to see a little bit more detailed information about the actual engagement. And I think this is also one of those long-term items where through the outreach, we continue to build relationships with our, our residents. And that in turn, I think creates a better comfort level to further strengthen the type of cycle that I was describing earlier where our residents speak to each of their representatives and then we can funnel that information into actionable items for, for city staff. Not that that isn't happening at the moment, but I think just because as Dr. Barber was saying, there's always a changing dynamic in the world, right? Demographics change, that kind of thing. I think we always need to be alert of those changes and modify our approaches to better suit our, our communities. And the last couple of items that I have here revolve around education and arts. For me, visual and performing arts are, are Um, for me, uh, visual and performing arts are are very important. And I think uh, these items are very important for our communities, for our youth, for our adults. Uh, especially in a town uh, where I've heard for many years um. Many folks say there isn't much to do for our teens. So that for me has stuck in my mind, whether it's true or not, it's a different story, but I think about it i- in terms of. You know, when uh, I'm not working, when I'm not at a council meeting, what do I want to do in my city, right? And uh. I think we have wonderful options. Uh, but there are also opportunities there for for developing more arts and and uh, education in our in our area. Um. More specifically about education. Um. Having uh, school age kids uh, for many years, um, something that that I've struggled with is. Um. Seeing the issues that our district um, has to deal with on a regular in terms of. Uh, you name it, um, kids being able to get to school, um. Uh, dropping uh, enrollment rates. Housing, I mean, we've we've heard a good number of them come to a a council meetings in terms of issues. Um, so I I think there's opportunity and there should be opportunity here for. Uh, a stronger partnership. Again, not not that that isn't in place yet, city and uh, school district. But I think there's there's more to be done there, and I don't know what that looks like. Um, but but I think there's opportunity there. Um. And uh, I know that uh, the superintendent has been to our meetings. And has pledged support in a variety of. Initiatives that we've been uh, talking about. So I think. Uh, doing the same with uh, you know, their board and and really being present and in trying to address items that impact them. Um, I think it's a win win situation for everyone. So um, I think just to wrap up. All in all, um, I again, great report, and I think the main message here also is that for our residents. Uh, knowing and seeing what kind of uh, work can be done, working together. Uh, I would encourage. Everyone to reach out to their council member. Uh, or whoever you feel comfortable uh, speaking to uh, with city staff. And and really communicating those uh, items, not necessarily issues, let's communicate celebrations as well. I hear that. Uh, on on a regular. So just encouraging. Our community to uh, open those channels of communication or or enhance those channels of communication with whoever you're. More comfortable with and and let us know what you need and. You know, we we're here to listen. So thank you.
Thank you, Gino. We'll bring it back to Dr. Barber. Um, she has a couple of the thoughts that she would like to share.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight a few things that I I have already highlighted already um, a little bit, but I did want to also um, talk a little bit about the. Business license inspection person that you were talking about and asking questions. Well, I had the um. Privilege to be in a meeting with one of our business um, districts. And the new person was there and they were very well received. Um, the businesses really enjoyed them being there and even in that short amount of time. They were able to see some um, potential opportunities of where. Other additional funds could be collected already just in one meeting. And that that and I think the other fact was that the business districts want to work with this person. So I think that's going to be a very positive thing. So I'm really looking forward to see what that report looks like. Um, a lot of the other pieces have already been talked about with the undergrounding. I think I I echo my colleagues on that of the importance and how to move forward, looking forward to February sixth. In sep, of course, I've already kind of addressed that in my question. I'd like to see the projects be able to find ways how we can move those through. As you said, we have a lot of projects for one person. So. What we can do as far as collaboration and moving those through and partnering with other people like you're you're talking about. Um, and then just kind of constantly continue to support um, the sports center. Um, I'm seeing just great strides there. Um, just even going there, seeing it myself and seeing. Even the community coming back alive, having people come up to me. You know, and tell me about um, what they're happy to see, seeing families back um, and and people starting to. Um, you know, uh, uh, kind of awaken again, if you will, and feeling comfortable to to do that. So I applaud what's being done there. And I would ask to continue to have that to grow for um, and also possibly doing things like. Uh, having other fundraising opportunities for the community because the community comes to me and talks about wanting to support that. So I'd like to see that as well. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. I'll try to run through my list quickly and and also provide some feedback on some of the things that I I've heard from my colleagues. Um, I think an important thing uh, for the council this year. Is looking at having a conversation around potentially any changes to the charter. I think the sooner that we can do that, the better because. Um, I I know that the election is going to be coming up soon and just to make sure that we provide. Um, public input on that. And just to give an example of what I mean in in regards to to that. Um. One of the things that we've talked about was when um, previous council member Dan Albert and I were running for mayor, we both. Were off the council. The day after Election Day and those seats were vacant, which put the staff in a weird situation about how to handle that. As opposed to just allowing those positions to be filled and um, and become vacant when they would have normally become vacant um, in December, when the new council is appointed. So. Things like that. I know that there's been conversations um, outside of that um, for whatever the little cleanups might be um, or larger policy discussions that the council might want to take on. So I. I I'd be interested in in making sure that we can um, have that conversation happen sooner rather than later. Um. Thank you, staff, so much for all the work done in regards to getting the rental registry up and running last year. A lot of public input and dialogues. I think we ended up having more meetings than we intended to, but in the end, I think it ended up benefiting us to come up with the solution that we could get a lot of. Public feedback and input on now that that's up and running. Um, and and I don't want to overwhelm us. Um, I I want us to make sure that we. Have the capacity to do that and do it well as we're getting used to and familiar with what that looks like. Um, I think the other side of the coin in regards to this larger conversation around the rent renter community. Um. Um, is making sure that we're. Doing that community engagement piece more broadly and trying to understand those anecdotal stories that people are going through. Providing a space for folks to be able to share their stories anonymously with the city so that we can take this information. Partnered with the data that will come from the registry and really allow a future council to be able to. Make good policy decisions that are drought data driven. Um, so that's one thing I'm I'm particularly eager for us to look at doing this year. Um. Um, speaking of public engagement. Um, I'm I'm also excited there. There's been some conversations with staff around um, the budget process and community engagement this year. So I'm I'm eager to see what that looks like and. Really trying to find an opportunity for us to engage in a deeper way with the public around um, you know, what's working, what's not. Um, one of the the points that I I. Is always a tough question um, in public budgeting is what do we cut? Nobody wants to cut anything because everything is 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 um, you know, it's benefiting somebody. Um, and if you cut something, you're going to. Make people upset. Um, but the fact of the matter is, is that in as much as we need to look at trying to find ways of increasing revenue. Um, we need to balance ourselves and make sure that we're um, thinking as efficiently as possible. And so. Part of my hope in that process is that we're, we are specifically engaging the public on. Um, if we were to cut, what does that look like? And and how can that be translated over to the council and some kind of proposal? That empowers us to think deeper about how do we manage our our budget in the city of Monterey. Um. Um, I I would speak more broadly on on public engagement and a couple of my colleagues had had brought that up, particularly um, Gino. Um, just in regards to us digging deeper there. Um. We are doing great work and I and I want to echo uh, uh, Councilmember Smith's comments. We're doing great. We've we've improved it over the last year and I want to give staff kudos for that. How do we keep digging in there? Um, I think is something that's particularly important to me. Um, and. An example of that, um, Brian brought this up earlier um, with what they're doing in the library is the social justice piece. So what are we doing to? Um. Uh, Smith brought up the, there's that. Paragraph for the ongoing partnerships, montage health, middleberry, um, MPC. The military installations, Monterey Aquarium, the school district. Um, what are we doing to? Look at those partnerships through a lens of social justice, but also finding new partnerships, NAACP, LULAC, whatever those organizations are. To make sure that we are being more intentional about. Holding that banner up of social justice and what that means for our community. Um, so I I'm I'm eager to see what that looks like. Okay, jumping off of that, um. We talked about the sixty eight corridor. I I'm in alignment. I think if there's some way that we can prioritize that, I think it would be good. Uh. I I completely acknowledge that we wouldn't be using those units to offset our. Current reiner requirement. It would just be in addition to, but I still think it would be the right direction in, but I'm I'm interested in hearing what the public has to say and getting that input. And what that process looks like. Married to this idea about the sixty eight corridor, I'm concerned regarding fire. Um, what's going on at the airport right now? So we need to figure that out. We need to dig deep with um, our relationship with the airport and. Um, look at what that means because I don't think folks realize this, but it's going to impact service time. Um, on the sixty eight corridor. And if we're talking about adding additional units over there, that's going to be hugely impactful. So we need to keep a a keen eye on that. Um. And I'll just throw out, uh, we we talked about the opportunity site. Um, right here behind City Hall that we're moving forward in, and I'm immensely, immensely grateful for all the work and the collaboration that's being done between the city and Mid Penn. Um, bless you. Uh. I'm not sure if folks remember um, that council meeting, the the last council meeting we had where this was agendized. And we had a room full of folks in the community. Partners and residents coming in and just speaking of so positively about the direction that we're going in there. And so we need to keep leaning in. I I'm hoping that we can try to find ways of. Of expediting the process without. Without. Ruining anything, um, but really proving how we can really move things forward um, and and get them done. Um, so if if more capacity can be spent in that space, um, um, I I very much support that. In addition to. We talked about four opportunity sites in the council. The previous council had given direction, initially had given direction for us to look at moving forward with two of those sites. The um, the Van Buren site was one of them and also the Adam Street Street site was the other one. Um, that's that one's kind of fallen to the wayside. I don't know how the council feels. I'm interested in the input. But I'd be particularly eager to see if there's capacity interest in um, picking that ball back up. Um, and I'm going to use that to jump to this conversation around water for a second because frankly, that's kind of very much tied to this. Discussion around uh, development. I think we need to make sure that we keep in mind that we're going to be getting this additional water allocation regarding the expansion of the Pure Water Monterey, which is. Scheduled to be done in the fall of twenty twenty five. At our Monterey One Water Board meeting next week, Dave Stolt is going to be coming and giving a presentation to the M one W board in regards to what the. Timeline looks like for that allocation. And so I hope to be able to report back to you all in regards to what that looks like so that we can begin to have a conversation as a city. Um, about how do we want to prioritize what that allocation looks like? Speaking of allocation, we are also uh, we can also expect an allocation with the Lake Elastero project water. Um, so I'm eager to see what that looks like. And then I I would finally just say, and I'm just trying to speak optimistically about the water and I I recognize there's a lot of things at play. Um, but the water allocation that's identified in the expansion and frankly, the base project of Pure Water Monterey as well, doesn't include. Any new recycled water. So as development happens and there's more wastewater feeding into uh, Monterey one, that will add additional water supply. That I think we should all just keep in mind about where the opportunities exist there. So. Um. And then I just kind of want to follow up on a few points that my colleague said. Um. Alan, the point about undergrounding, I'm I'm excited to see what staff um, has to bring forward. I think if there was capacity or space for us to find something within our budget. That allowed for a permanent um, allocation towards undergrounding. Like you said, it is very expensive, but I think if we can find something in the budget. Um, on a long term, permanent basis to show that we're serious about it, I think. Doing other measures, whether it be a bond or whatever else it might look like to help. Um, support that, it makes it easier for the community to support because there's something that's already there. And I think that there's a way that we can make that work. So. I just um, offer uh, uh, my candid support on that one. Um. There's this conversation around um, planning support and 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 I hear kind of two different elements. I I just sat here and said a lot, you know, kind of how can we expedite this project um, behind City Hall? But how can we also get Adam Street? Um, Councilmember Smith talked about bringing up the RFP again for Ryan Ranch. I mean, there's a lot. Um, and so I I also recognize though that we've added some positions um, in planning. Um, and and I would ask, is there? Is there or should there be an opportunity for us to look at doing more there? Um, especially when we look at the idea of getting an additional water allocation, what does that look like? Um. A a quick question, Hans, where do, how how many positions have we added um, in the planning department? We just added one. And what does that look like in comparison to the two positions that we're supposed to be adding in regards to the registry?
Okay, so planning division has added one uh, planner to that. In housing, we added uh, two HCD coordinators. For that both are busy. And uh, one is uh, full time rental registry. And the other person is working right now also on the rental assistance program.
Okay, and it is, so what is the plan for, because in the in the. Planned budget for the registry, there was, we had identified two positions, so we've hired one already.
It it was one position and one administrative assistant. Yeah.
Okay, and so is the administrative assistant position?
It's it's, I believe it's vacant right now, right? We we just lost the admin assistant, so we are bringing somebody back.
That was, so that was, that was an admin. Admin position that had already existed pre the registry. So is there going to be one in addition to that?
No.
Okay, we're just reallocating the funds. Okay. Um, so I, so for whatever it's worth, I I I don't know where there might be opportunity and we can maybe bring this conversation back up around the budget process, but. Um, not only for the purposes of. Um. Development, um, of probably more residential, which is I think where the conversation is focusing more, but also this other piece around economic development. Could we bring in an economic development director or somebody that helps focus specifically on our business districts? Because. I do know um, that the business districts feel underappreciated. Um, and and this isn't, you know. One side versus another. I think it's about our ability to be able to do it all. And I think that there are opportunities in downtown. I think there are opportunities on Canary Row. I think there are definitely opportunities. Um, on North Fremont. And so I just kind of put that plug in in regards to our ability to be able to add some capacity there. I think that would be of great value to the city. Um. Speaking specifically to the economic development piece around properties sitting vacant. What? Is our ability to be able to do anything if a property is sitting vacant? Um. And the community has deep interest and the council has deep interest in wanting to do something about that property just sitting there. What what? Recourse do we have as a city to be able to take action with that?
That's a question we will address. I I don't want to make up anything. So we're talking about now the M and S supply.
It could be M and S, it could be um, one of the sites that I think of in particular is that that. Car garage that sits right in front of the bowling alley. Um, I remember when I was on the Architecture Review Committee, there was a project that came in front of us and it died. I know that somebody wanted to purchase that property, that property owner doesn't want to. Let it go. It's just sitting there and it's an eyesore and it's nothing is happening with it. So I I think there's many different examples throughout the city and I appreciate the fact that we'll find. Um, space to connect that. And I will uh, and because I could go on and on all night. Um, I will end on a a nice one, a fun one. Um, and and I appreciate, Gino, you bringing this up. Um, art in the community. I think it's um. Something that we always underappreciate and and kind of gloss over, but I think there is such a great opportunity for us to lean in and recognizing the. Value that it can create in our community. Um, I know that one of the, I can't remember, I think there was a project on the last um, NCIP list. That was for public art and I can't. And I can't remember if it made the cutoff or not.
It made, was approved as a mural and trade on Del Monte.
And, um, okay, that's another one. I think there was another one that maybe didn't make the cutoff.
Was that another one? No, I, I don't know. Yes.
My point in all this is to say that I think there's a great opportunity for us to maybe go to the NCIP and try to find some capacity to do public art and leveraging all these local artists that we have here. We all know how big of a community that exists here and allowing them to create some beautification within our city. I think that can make a, a, a huge difference if we have several different sites that we use to make that happen. And it can be a whole experiential thing for visitors and locals alike to be able to go around and just enjoy those. So I kind of leave that as an idea. And then my final thought on the art piece is I know that Monterey Museum of Art just purchased Casa Gutierrez. And I think there's a lot of opportunity there with potentially making Caia Principal and Art Corridor. So I'm really excited to see what that looks like. I don't want to speak to too much of it now, but lots of opportunities that the city of Monterey can be a partner on as, as these types of projects move forward. So any last thoughts? Councilmember Smith?
Artwork, art wise. I'd love to see something up there on that spot that's right behind that.
Oh, and you have the perfect seat for it. You look right at it.
Yeah. So once upon a time, we had a lot of things going on with revitalization downtown. We had the burned out building on Alvarado. There was proposal to rebuild. And we had a big map that was showing a lot of the things that were in the queue. So I, I just think that there are a lot of things that we need to focus on and celebrate in, in as far as activity goes. But I think there's an opportunity for, you know, some progress on what's happening here. And maybe it's in, in terms of, well, there's mid pen, that's on a project list that's coming soon. Are there other things that are coming soon? So I think that there's a good spot to, to focus it right there about. What are the coming attractions that have to do with what the community is looking forward to? So I think we should, we should get them out, get them out and put them right in front and center.
Senator Hoffa?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to your comment, Mr. Mayor, about the other opportunity sites. And I have two thoughts on that. Yes, if, if it's feasible, I would like to see us revisit and maybe move forward one of those as well. I'm cognizant of, I don't want to overburden our planning department in a way that would in any way slow down mid pen. And, you know, the Madison Street project, but I can also imagine as that starts moving forward at a certain part, point, more of the work is maybe mid pen and maybe some of the workload for planning slows down on that. I don't know. But if, but if so, that would be something I'd be interested in seeing. The other thing there is, you know, do we have water before we didn't? But we are looking at Elastero, we are. So like, I think possibly that might be the first thing. But if, but if, but if it, you know, it starts to look like we're going to, you know, have a successful water acquisition, either through Marina Coast or through some sort of deal that we're able to broker with our own water and, and Elastero. Then I think it would make sense to, to revisit one or more of those other opportunity sites and have another, revisit that conversation. So.
Appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, a comment.
Absolutely. Yeah, I just want to, yeah, I mean, you all know this. Tonight, we, we saw, this was the work plan. So we saw what's happened in this last year and what our city staff has done. And they have a variety of things that they didn't even talk about that are in the queue as we move into 2024. So there's always a lot of wishes and, and we have goals and we have objectives and we, we have campaign promises. We have our constituents we talked to about, you know, across the, the community. I, I do want to say that I think there, there is a time and place to say aspirational things have a place. We should never close those down, but we also have to be a little practical in terms of the work plan, the personnel, the, the, the budget process. When we take a step back and we say, okay, what's the capacity we have? And let's be careful and not make some of the mistakes of the past where we, we have, we're, we're driving towards what we think is really important, but it can't be done because we don't have water or it can't be done because you don't have a property owner that's interested. So all things in balance, I think, I think mid-year 2024 will be in a place where we can say, okay, well, where are we at on the water? Where are we at on the, the progress from MW1? Where are we at in terms of land use and planning and what's the staff capacity to, to launch forward? You know, the project on Adam Street, I was opposed to only for two reasons and I'll just say it. If it came back at the right time and we had water and it was scoped right with balance, I'm not against it. And I wasn't against it before, except for it was too large and we didn't have water. So I like to engage things that we can get a result of, but not set staff involved in entrenchment of lots of moving parts, but we can't see the actual project be completed. So I just, it's a balanced approach. I want to have a balance of let's do things where we know we have the capacity to get it done. But let's not try and go so far that we have obvious hurdles before we even start. Let's look at those obvious hurdles and acknowledge them. And pay more attention to the things that are doable in a reasonable timeframe with the capacity of the staff that we have.
So I, I appreciate the feedback and, and what I think might be helpful is that we engage in another conversation soon. My, my concern is, is that you're right, some of these things could be aspirational, but how do we have that open dialogue with staff? And so I, I'm hearing staff writing and typing away the feedback that they've heard tonight from the council. So maybe give them a moment to digest it. But I think it would be helpful for us to get back to the table and have that conversation around, hey, what's doable, what's not, what's going to be the priority and where's the cutoff line? So that way we're just, we're all on the same page and we're, and we're, there's no misunderstandings in regards to how we want to move forward. So I think that's a good thing for us to make happen. I appreciate the feedback. Did you have any last minute thoughts?
Sorry, I'm not sure whether city manager is going to talk about the presentation that happened today.
At council.
It's council.
So, so do you want to bring it up?
We're so real quick, if it's not, if it's not related to this agenda item, we may have to defer it until the next council meeting. So during council comments or, or city manager comments, maybe we could have, we just tee up that for, for the council meeting. Okay. So clearly we're doing a lot, honestly, through the waterfront, through parking, through public works and all the projects that, that are going on throughout the city to make sure that our streets, streets are functioning. I actually saw the street sweeper come by my house this morning. I'm like, it's raining. But, but I understand the purpose of it from police and fire, keeping our community safe from the library that is keeping our community safe in a whole other way that is underappreciated. Everything that you all do every single day is just so deeply appreciated. And so on behalf of the entire city, just really want to give a lot of kudos to staff for everything you guys do. So with that, thank you, everybody. We'll go ahead and adjourn the council meeting. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss something? Okay.